Hey, everybody, and welcome to the Newbury Board Zoning Board Appeals Hearing for the scheduled hearing date February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three of Valentine's Day, ZBAA. We have a bit of a short board this evening, so I'm gonna just kind of. And do we, how many do we have online? Okay, so just Brad, but how about? Attendees sort of filling in at all, or?
Yeah, there's a few.
Okay. Maybe I should log on to just so I can see them. For those of you that are logging on remotely, I'll take a moment and just introduce myself and members of the board that are here. We'll establish our quorum, establish who our voting members will be, and the public hearing this evening, we'll start with a roll call, and then we'll get into public hearings that are on for this evening. We do have one request continuance. We will take that matter first, so that we, anyone that might be here can know when the return date will be, and so folks don't have to stick around just to hear a continuance. So we'll begin by calling the roll, and if members of the ZBAA can just respond, present or here, now that would be great. Just a sec. Okay. Mr. Steven Delisle is absent. Mr. Ken Swanton here. Mr. Walt Chen is absent. Mr. Gregory Bennett?
Here.
Mine, Ms. Lynn Scowl.
Here.
And Ms. Patricia Pecknick?
Here.
Rob Champetti, I'm here. So we have members here are myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Bennet, Ms. Scowl, and Ms. Pecknick. That five members. So for the record, the five voting members this evening will be Ken Swanton, Gregory Bennet, Lynn Scowl, Patricia Pecknick, and Rob Champetti. So for those, and I don't know, because I can't see on the board how many are logged in remotely, but for those in the room, although I think everyone in the room is familiar with the ZBAA process for anyone online. In order for any application to be successful, at least four votes have to be in the affirmative by members of the ZBAA. So any recusals or disqualification that results in a minimum board, any applicant will have the opportunity to request a continuance, have the benefit of a full board. Since we've established, since we've established our roll call and I've introduced the board, we, we can say for the record that we have a quorum. We can begin with our, our business this evening. We have before us first and foremost, a, an application for a request for a continuance. This is a matter of one ninety-three High Street. And it is an appeal, docket twenty nineteen dash zero four two, continued from seven nine nineteen, seven twenty-three nineteen, eight thirteen nineteen, twelve ten nineteen, six nine twenty-seven, twenty-eight twenty, ten thirteen twenty, two eight twenty. You know, I probably should have looked ahead before I started reading these all. Three twenty-three, twenty-one, two fourteen, twenty-one, and five ten twenty-two, and finally, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. A request for further continuance to April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Does the applicant wish to be heard on the request, or just simply the request?
Mr. Chair, Lisa Mead, me Talman Costa, on behalf of Louis Heveling, Heveling Real Estate LLC. I do want to be heard just to give an update to the board. So for those members who are more recent to the board than two thousand nineteen, this is a matter that was appealed to the land court, the land court, not the enforcement order, but a related matter was appealed to the land court. This has been continued pending the outcome of that appeal. The appeal decision came down in November, I think. And it included, it was twofold. Part of it was a remand to this board, which we are working on. And part of it was to uphold the board's determination related to a much larger parking lot in the back of a funeral home. And so because this enforcement order is related to parking generally on site, and because the remand is related to the construction of the addition, the garage, we're seeking to continue this until after the remand, because it will include the location of parking for the residents on site, and which may or may not be located in a similar location. So we're looking to continue this until four twenty-five, twenty-three. We're waiting on the plans to be completed, the site plan to be completed from the engineer before the remand comes back to this board.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Need. Any members of the ZBAA? Any members of the ZBAA wish to be heard, or have any questions for Attorney Need with respect to the request? I have one, please. Ken Swanton.
I am confused, so.
So there are still litigation issues that haven't come down from the court?
There's a remand is part of the decision of the court. A remand, I think, Mr. Swan, I don't know that you've been on the board since a remand has occurred, so.
I don't think any of the five, just him.
No, no, but a remand. So what happens is the court says that you need the board to decide this particular issue. The court's not going to decide it. So they decided part of the issue, but they didn't decide all of it. So we're coming back to the board to decide that other part of the issue, namely the addition on the back of the house.
Why do you have to wait so long to come back?
Because, what, so long for this, or so long for the remand?
Well, I was thinking, why not do it?
Well, so because right now it's February fourteenth. We haven't filed yet, so when you file, it's a thirty-day notice period. Essentially, when you file, it gets thirty days before we're, before the board. So that's the middle of March. Right? And then you have to hear it. I suspect it's not going to be done in one meeting, but I don't know that. So I've given time, so we don't have to come back here again for another continuance to the March, to the April meeting.
So the delay is not so much to do with the court, it's to do with preparing your things to come here to present to us.
That's correct. It's the engineering plan that we're waiting on to be finished to come back for the remand.
No, it's just disappointing, because you weren't here last time. But last time, it was a continuance. We asked your associate. Is this the last one?
Well, you know, our, our, that's always our hope, right?
Yeah. All right.
We don't get to control the timing.
I'm wondering if our planning department had any any other news on this or not.
No, I mean, Attorney Need just clarified one particular point that we were not aware of, which was that some, perhaps some variation plan that they're looking at in relation to that area. We understood the court to be distinguishing the rear area from the garage, but something like this little component that the applicant needs to look at in, in terms of returning the board. So perhaps that provides some explanation for the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. That's so much. Very good.
So my understanding is that the land court had said that the issue of the garage addition, because it was not much discussed, and that most of the discussion was about the parking lot, that it would be remanded to discuss that plan. But you're saying that's not the plan, there'll be a different plan.
No, no, no. The, the addition plan is coming back. But that has parking associated with, because right now the parking is occurring directly behind the house. Right? But if the addition goes on, the parking will be back. If you read this enforcement order, it has very specifics about where the parking can happen and cannot happen. And so my point is, is that I, the board can't decide this enforcement order until you decide the remand, because depending on what you do related to the addition, will depend on where the personal parking is for the house.
Okay, if I continue to look at the plans as they were submitted years ago, that's okay. If I prepare for the meeting in April.
Yeah, the, the last set of, the last set of plans. That's right. Okay, that's what I, that's, thank you. Yep.
All right, very good. Ms. Scow, any questions?
None, thank you.
All right. Mr. Bennet, do you have any comments or questions for Attorney Need on the request for?
No.
All right, very good. Very good. Then with that, we will, I'll entertain a motion to to continue as per the applicant's request, the application of one ninety-three High Street. And what's the date that we're?
Four twenty-five.
Four twenty-five.
I'll make that motion to continue the one ninety-three High Street, seal to four twenty-five, twenty-three. That's on a docket number twenty nineteen dash oh forty.
Very good. Motion's made. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Scow. Motion's made by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Mr. by Ms. Scow. Calling the roll, Mr. Swanton. Yes, Ms. Pecknick.
Yes.
Ms. Scow?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. Motion carries. The application of one nine three High Street is continued to the hearing date of four twenty-five. Thank you, and thank you, Attorney Need, for the, for the update regarding the court's movement on matters. Moving now to our next application in our public hearing, this is an application which is also a continuance continued from the applicant, from the date, the hearing date of January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. This is the application of Diane Hanley and Michael Dow, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Talman and Costa LLC. The applicant, applicant address is thirty-four Ting Street. The applicant is seeking all necessary approvals, special permits, special permits for nonconformities and/or variances or approvals to renovate the existing structure by constructing a new second floor extending upward, extending an upward exterior wall in existing nonconforming location with new roof from the new roof form at a higher, at a higher, higher height. This matter was already opened on one twenty-four. I just wanted to reread the detail of the request for anyone that's logged on remotely, and Attorney Need.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the board, Lisa Mead, Mead Talman and Costa, thirty Green Street. In your report for the record, with me this evening is Diane Hanley, who is one of the owners of the property, and I represent Diane and Michael Dow. I'm not sure if Angela Campbell is on remotely or not. She's the architect on the project. She was going to be away, so she may not be present. Also, my colleague Ryan Clemens is here this evening, who has also worked on this application. As the chair indicated, Diane and Michael proposed to renovate, and if you go to the next slide, please, renovate and upwardly extend their pre-existing nonconforming one and a half-story single-family home. And in addition, put a small addition on the left side of the home, which is the southerly side of the home as well. The property is located in the R two zoning district at the corner of Ting and Monroe Street, and was constructed around nineteen eighty-five. So a new house in the report. The property has an existing nonconformities under the ordinance. Property consists of six thousand four hundred and fifty-four square feet of area, where the ordinance requires ten thousand in the R two. The lot is a corner lot, and one front yard setback on Ting Street, which is the primary front yard, is fifteen point seven, and the other on Monroe is ten, where twenty-five feet is required. The rear setback is twelve-six, where twenty-five feet is required, and all other dimensional controls conform. Go to the next slide, please. So here's the view from Ting Street. You can see this cape, expanded cape. Next slide, please. And here's if you're driving down Ting Street towards the river. Next slide, please. And this is at the corner of Monroe and Ting. Next slide, please. And this is from Monroe Street, so this will be the northerly side of the property. Next slide, please. And again, this is the rear and the northerly side of the property as well. If you go to the next slide, please. So essentially, from a site plan point of view, you can see on the kind of the right-hand side of the property is the Cape-style house. And you see that little four-by-fifteen addition right there on the left side of the property. So that's going to be the small addition that extends the front and rear yard setbacks. But as you can see from the front yard, that extension is not as bad as the existing nonconformity, but just a slightly, slightly four feet out, but it's not as intense, if you will, as the existing nonconformity. So the idea is to build a one-story addition to the west, as I've just described, which will be one floor. And then the other is what in the end will look like an extended dormer, but in reality is actually requires the removal of a roof, given the fact that it's Cape. And given the Cape-style construction, and then rebuild the roof with a partial second floor. This is all done vertically, increasing the mean height by five point fifteen feet, but the ridge height by two feet, ten inches. So it is intensifying in an up, or extending in an upward fashion, the rear yard and front yard nonconformities. Let's go to the next slide, please. So the addition on the left side of the house will add fifty-nine square feet to the house. The upward extension will add two hundred and forty-five square feet to the house. And so, excuse me, in total, it will add two hundred and forty-five square feet to the house, so it's a hundred and somewhat square feet for the upward extension. And therefore, a total of two hundred and forty-five will be added. So the house goes from one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five square feet of living area to a total of two thousand two hundred and thirty square feet of living area. If you go to the next slide, please. So here in elevation view is the south elevation on the top left. You can see the existing, and then on the right, you see the proposed. So you can see the dormers that go on that current smaller Cape-style addition, and then the new roof in the background, and in the very front where the four windows are, or is that one-story addition coming out? And then you have the west really view on the bottom elevation. And so you can see what that looks like on the back. So that's actually ends up being backside of the house. Next slide, please. And then east elevation, which is Ting Street. So here you see the small bump out on the left. And then you see the new dormer on the existing addition on the left. And then you see how the house raises on the main part of the house, but ends up looking like a large dormer, but it does have an increase in the, the ridge height. And similarly, on the north elevation of the existing, you can see what it does now. And then you can see the proposed addition or the upward extension on the back. Next slide, please. So that the, the board needs to find whether or not the proposed addition creates any new nonconformities, and it doesn't. As I said, we're extending the front and rear yard setbacks in a vertical fashion, and also because that little addition there being extended four feet to the south. But there is no new nonconformity. And then the question is whether or not the proposed work will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Here, the proposal's going to add a mere two hundred and forty-five square feet to the house. There is a modest expansion of the nonconformity to the south, and then the upward intensification or extension, excuse me, to the, the ridge height. The property's neighborhood consists primarily of two-story or more single-family homes on Ting, Monroe, Oakland, and Broad Street. And the living areas on those homes range from anywhere from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet, many of which are on smaller lots. If you could go to one more down. Caitlin? Thank you. So here's the mind maps, and you can see the property that we're talking about right now in the yellow. And then you can see the houses that surround it, which are many of them that are much larger on smaller lots, some are on similar-sized lots, same-sized houses. If you go to the next slide, please. Also, many of the houses in the neighborhood have an eclectic architectural style, bungalows, federalists, capes, and splits. So why don't we go through these slides? You can see what the neighborhood looks like. So here's thirty-seven, thirty-nine Ting. That's across the street. And next slide, forty and thirty-eight, up the street a little bit. And next slide. Here's forty-four and forty-two. Next slide, please. And then here's a federalist at forty-seven. Next slide. And forty-eight Ting. Next slide, please. Then we have a cape, expanded cape, similar, forty-nine and fifty-one. Next slide, please. Then here we have fifty Ting Street. Next slide, please. Thirty, thirty-two Ting Street, and the difference is more colonial, I guess. Next slide, please. Then we have twenty-nine and thirty-eight. So we have expanded capes here as well. Next slide, please. Then with their two different architectural styles right across, or up the street from thirty-four. Next slide, please. And then another federalist. Next slide, please. And we have a mix here at twenty-four and twenty-two. Next slide, please. Then we have this beautiful brick structure at twenty-three Ting Street, many of you are familiar with. Next slide, please. And then again, we have more common structures as well at forty-five and forty-seven. Next slide. And then forty-six Monroe. Next slide, please. And thirty-eight Monroe. And next slide. Thirty-nine and forty-one. The point of all of these is that there are varying types and sizes of houses in the general neighborhood. Next slide, please. And thirty-four Monroe. This is an extended. Okay, I'm not, somebody else can describe that house, but obviously, number dormers, things of that nature. Next slide, please. And then here's twenty-eight Monroe Street, which many of you recognize as well, beautiful brick with the architectural shit down from the roof. Next slide, please. So the point of that is, is that this neighborhood generally has a very eclectic style of architecture, and certainly the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, but is rather consistent with the number of the houses and the varying styles throughout. And the addition of two hundred and forty-five square feet is certainly keeps the house consistent with the neighborhood, and certainly not substantially more detrimental. I would also say to the board that we do have a, a letter of support from Jim Bragg, who is the rear or on the west side of the house as a neighbor. And with that, we request the board approve the special permit and allow the construction to occur.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Need, for the presentation. Closing that portion of the public hearing, we will now go into public comment. And I didn't say this at the outset, but for anyone that's unfamiliar with public comment, we invite anyone to raise their hand either virtually or in the room. I will start with in-the-room comments. You needn't pick a vertical pro or con, simply raise your hand either in person or virtually when we get to the online and give us your name and address for our keeper of the minutes, Ms. Gretchen Joy, and speak your line. We do ask that everyone try to keep it to two minutes, if possible. And I also always say this, know that in the event that a public comment comes in the form of a question, please know that it's no intended discourtesy to anyone that the board members nor the chair will directly answer that question, but rather, it's simply the format of the proceedings and under the rules of order that we operate under, that we will take in that question and hear what anyone has to say, and you will very shortly hear some version, if not verbatim, your question from a member of the ZBAA posed during the questions from the board segment. So take heart, we are not ignoring your question. Just feel free to frame it that way if you wish. So with that, anyone in the room wish to be heard? Any hands in connection with the application? Seeing none. Anyone online? Anyone who is logged on remotely? Let's see. Going once, going twice, seeing no hands. Okay, no public comments. We will close the public comment section of the hearing and go to questions from the board. You're going with Mr. Swan.
Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm familiar with the, with the street, the neighborhood. Presentation was quite confusing, but I haven't.
Very good. Ms. Scott?
Not many questions either.
Ms. Pecknick?
Nor do I.
Mr. Bennett?
Well, I'll make it unanimous. I have no questions.
Very good. I have nothing. I have neither. So and thank you for the presentation's detail as well. So having no further questions from any member of the ZBAA, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go into our final segment, which is the deliberation section. This again is a special permit for nonconformities. So I'll ask members of ZBAA in our deliberations to kindly tailor your deliberations around the, the criteria that is required as a binding by the members of the ZBAA for a special permit for nonconformities. And we'll start with Mr. Swan.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I concur that there are no new nonconformities. So now we need to think about how this is relative to the neighborhood compared to what's there. Point out, the only condition is very slight. You mentioned two hundred and forty-five square feet of living area is quite small. This is mostly an upward expansion. And the fact that it's set back well off of Ting Street or fifteen feet. And that many houses in the neighborhood are upwardly extended, if you will. And the fact the lot coverage is really quite low. I don't really have any problems with this. I, I I think it is not more detrimental for the neighborhood. And I can support this evaluation.
All right. I'll take Mr. Swanton. This is Scott.
I would just echo Mr. Swanton. I think it's very nice design. Be a nice addition to me.
Ms. Pecknick?
Yes, so corner locks always require a deliberation. But with this particular intersection, I was going to run the ample streets, all the houses have that kind of setback. It's a very modest, or many, rather, many of the houses as it is now, so I couldn't find it substantially more detrimental, and I would support it. Well.
Thank you, Ms. Pecknick. And Mr. Bennett?
Yes, I concur with the comments of my colleagues, and I too can support this application.
Okay, thank you. And just for the record, I'll say, though it's all been intimated to by the deliberations, the the legal criteria for the board to consider this evening on any special permit, but in this application is pursuant to section nine B two A of our zoning code, and it's a two-pronged test. The board must find that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming user structure. And that there are no new nonconformities being created, and I think the board has deliberated with respect to both of those tenants of the of the legal criteria. I'll also just point out for members of the ZBAA that DPS has reviewed this application as well, and it's, it's part of our analysis to incorporate when able, if able, any recommendations of DPS. DPS recommends that the sidewalk be replaced along the full frontage of the parcel, and that the tree, that a tree be planted along Ting Street in front of the structure. And so any motion, when we get to the next phase, I'll ask the moving member of ZBAA kindly consider incorporating that into your motion, so that it's incorporated into any vote of the board.
That's a question. Sure. Did they specify what the sidewalk is to be constructed with?
They did not.
This is standard. Mr. Chair, if I could.
Yeah.
There's a standard under the ordinance that has to be approved by DPS in this neighborhood. I think that it's I think it's hot top or concrete, but not required, I think. But there is a standard in the ordinance, so that.
So the, and just to kind of backfill that a bit. And the, that's the middle standard, and but that's the criteria that has to be met at a, at a baseline. Okay, any further deliberations? Anyone? Hearing none. I'll close that portion of the public hearing, and I will invite a motion to approve. And also, we hadn't said this earlier, but I'll just say quickly, when we, when we vote on any matter, for anyone that's unfamiliar, we follow Robert's Rules of Order, so you will hear this phase of the public hearing being brought to a motion in the form of an affirmative motion to approve. That doesn't mean that the moving member of the ZBAA intends to support it or supports it. It's simply procedural, so that it can be moved, brought to the floor, and seconded. So just in case there's anyone not familiar with that, though, I suspect almost everyone online in here probably is. So with that, do we have a motion?
I'll be happy to make the motion. I'd like to move that we approve the special permit for nonconformities for thirty-four Ting Street with the condition that it meets the EPS suggestion around the sidewalk and the tree on things. Sidewalk on bostards and the tree on things.
In front of a structure.
In front of a structure. And that is number twenty-two dash thirty-three.
Great motion. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Motion's been made by Mr. Swanton. A second. Ms. Pecknick seconds. Motion's made and seconded, and so sorry about that. Okay, calling the roll. Mr. Swanton. Yes, Ms. Scow?
Yes.
Ms. Pecknick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. Motion carries. And the application for a special permit for nonconformities is approved. Good luck. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next agenda matter. This is a new application. The application is by Amy Aldrich, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Talman and Costa LLC for the address of fourteen Jackson Street. This is a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits, special permits, and/or approvals to construct an addition to the front. I'm sorry. Construct an addition to the rear of a single-family home resulting in an extension of the existing rear yard nonconformity and an increase in the existing nonconforming lot and coverage. May we hear from the applicant?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And for the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Talman and Costa, thirty Green Street, in your report on behalf of Amy Aldrich, and Amy's with me here this evening, back here. And the architect is NPH Design. I don't think they're on, but they may be. Um, nonetheless, the application is for a special permit for non-conformities. At fourteen Jackson Street, you can go to the next slide, please. Uh, Amy proposes to construct a, a very modest forty-nine square foot addition. On the rear of her house where an existing deck exists, and it's one story. Um, the property is located in the R two and D C O D and zoning districts under the ordinance. Um, this property is improved with a single-family residence, uh, that was constructed about eighteen fifty, according to the assessments records, and eighteen seventy-five, according to. The district data sheets. Um. However, it appears that the district data sheets that the property was significantly altered around nineteen thirty. And now it is given a C A notation and is listed as M C on the district data sheets, and therefore. Um, the D C O D does not apply. The property includes, um, forty-two six point six feet of front end on Jackson Street, where ninety feet is required. Includes twenty-four hundred and ten square feet of area, where ten thousand square feet is required. The front yard is setback two point seven, where twenty-five feet is required. The left side setback is zero point five feet, where ten feet is required. And the rear setback is eleven point five, where twenty-five feet is required. The lot coverage is thirty-three point eight percent, where twenty-five percent is required. Uh, the property is conforming for the right side setback and open space and building height. And as I said, um, Amy proposes to construct, uh, a small addition on the rear of her home. Um, the proposal will impact the rear yard by extending it, but not intensifying it, um, could you go to the next slide, please? So as we said, uh, it's a forty-nine square foot addition. Um, and the new addition itself will be nineteen point six feet from the rear property line, so it's still not twenty-five. But the closest rear is eleven point five feet. Uh, and the addition increases lot coverage from thirty-three point eight percent to thirty-five point eight percent. The reason that seems like two percent is a big deal, the lot is a small lot, even though it's a very small addition. Next slide, please. So here is, um, the site plan, and as you can see, and if you could blow that up a little bit. Thank you, uh, as you can see in the beige toward the back corner, uh, that is where the proposed addition is. And you can also see there's a deck on the left side of the back, which exists. Because there is a significant drop-off in elevation in the back, that deck is actually the rear yard setback. Because it's, it's higher than three feet, so that's where the eleven point five is. And the addition remains at nineteen, uh, point five, nineteen point six in the rear line, so. It certainly doesn't intensify it, but it's not a full twenty-five feet, so it is, uh, an extension. Um, and if you could go to the next slide, please. So here is the, um, existing, um. Uh, condition on the front, and that's the proposed condition on the front, because there's nothing happening. To the front, next slide, please. And here is the left side, um, and again, nothing's happening on the left side of the house, so that is proposed and existing. And the next slide, please. So here is the existing right side elevation, and you can see in the top left-hand corner. There is a little, uh, bump out with a small roof, uh, shed roof in the back. Um, and then you can see, um, right below it. How that, um, bump out is going to be extended and the roof extended over the deck. So if you look in the right side, top is existing and the right, excuse me, the left side top is existing. And the left side bottom is the proposed, and you can see that small addition on the back. Uh, similarly, um, on the top right, you see the existing back elevation. And then, um, as you go to the bottom right, you can see the proposed condition. Uh, where the addition comes out a little bit and the windows change. And there's not a door back there anymore, and then you can see the sliders on the left hands, excuse me, on the right-hand side as well. Next slide, please. So here's, um, these are photos of the house currently, again, that elevation isn't changing at all. It's a sweet little house, next slide, please. And then, um, the left side is not changing at all either, next slide, please. And here is, uh, the right side, and you can see a little bit where it's going to change in the very back. Um, but you can't really see it from that angle, and next slide, please. And there's a better, um, location, so that, that back is going to be extended, uh, four feet out, next slide, please. And then you can see the elevation change in the back, so now you understand why the rear yard goes off the deck and not. Uh, the house itself. Next slide, please. And again, do you see the elevation difference, um, and so that addition is going to come out where the existing brown deck is, the natural wood deck. Um, but not as far, obviously, as where the white deck is. Next slide, please. So, um, in that, uh, the board has, uh, two criteria to meet, uh, one, that the, will be no new non-conformity. And here, there is no new non-conformity being created. Uh, that rear, uh, setback is going to be intensive, uh, extended a little bit, but not the full amount, because it's not going to go all the way to the eleven. Um, and then the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood here. Um, we are extending the year rear yard setback, but not intensifying it, it's a two percent increase in the lot coverage. Uh, it is a minor rear yard addition at four feet in total. Um, extending to the rear, it will be minimally visible from the streetscape. Um, and even with the addition, uh, the structure will remain one of the small structures in the neighborhood. Um, with, um, one thousand one hundred and four square feet in total. Um, so that is going to continue to be a small house, next slide, please. And so here, it just isn't, so you can see the mind maps, you can see where the house is in the neighborhood. Um, and how the rest of the neighborhood relates to it, next slide, please. Again, that's a little better view, so you can see the footprints, um, so there's just a little teeny bump out that's going to happen in the back. Next slide, please. And here's a photo of Jackson Street, so that view is going to change slightly, going back into that deck a little bit. My, next slide, please. And this is a little further, so you can just see more houses in the neighborhood, next slide, please. And similarly, other houses in the neighborhood, as you can see, this is still going to be the, one of the tiniest houses in the neighborhood, what, the addition's not going to change that. Next slide, please. And then here's another view, um, from the house from the left side. Um, so with that, um, I've also got for you this evening, I didn't, um, have them ahead of time, but there are. Five letters of support, we have sixteen Jackson Street, we have. Twelve Jackson Street, ten Jackson Street, eighteen Jackson Street, and eleven Jackson Street, and I'll give these to Caitlin for the file. Sorry, Andy, so that, um, we believe that the proposed addition certainly is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Than the existing structure, and we would request the board approve the special permit for non-conformities.
Very good, thank you, Tureneed, um. We'll go to, uh, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to public comments. Uh, anyone in the room wish to speak in connection with the application? Going once, going twice? Anyone online? Who wishes to? Be heard in connection with the application? Don't see any hands. Okay, uh. Closing the public comment portion of the public hearing, we will go right into questions from the board beginning.
I only have one question, could you put the site plan up, um? You could blow it up a little bit there, I know. So there's a house. Right behind this house, just like a few feet off the lot line, and I, I believe that's number twelve. Um. And Lisa, when you ran through who supported this, was that one of the houses that, uh, twelve? Jackson Street. I think you just said it was.
I think so, it's done better, right?
Yes, it is, yeah.
That may be one of the few people who can see it, right, but, um, all right, I have no.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swanton, this is Scott.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Mr. Bennett?
I have no questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bennet, uh, I too, uh, have no questions. So, uh, we'll close the questions from the board. Section, and we will go into. Board deliberations, and again, similar to our last application, the criteria for a special permit. For non-conformities, um, is a two-prong test, and board members must find. That there is no intensification of an existing non-conformity, um, and, uh, also that the. Post-alteration is not substantially more detrimental than the existing conditions. Uh, lot and, uh, and impact, so with that, we'll begin deliberations, Mr. Swanton, why don't you? Kick things off.
Sure, uh, while the first criteria, are there any new non-conformities, uh? I don't believe there are. Uh, and on the second criteria, is it, uh? Substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there currently? Uh, I don't believe it is, because it's quite small, I mean, forty-nine square feet. I don't recall one that's small, but thankfully, um, so it's quite small, and it's, and it's in the back, where it's. Kind of hard to see, I guess you can see it kind of from the right side of there a little bit, but. It's kind of minimal, um, it does increase the coverage, intensifies the coverage a little bit, but. Uh, it's so small, and it's in the back, I, I can support this application.
Very good, uh, thank you, Ms. Scott.
Yeah, I agree, I don't see that there are any new non-conformities, um, and I do not think, given the size, that they would be substantially detrimental to the community. So I would be.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, I'm Ms. Patrick.
I agree with those findings.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bennett?
Yes, I would agree, no non-conformities, the very small, uh, addition here certainly is consistent. Uh, with homes in the neighborhood in terms of size, scale, and massing, and, uh. Uh, consistent with, uh. The admitted small lot here, nevertheless, uh, I think it, uh. It works well, and I'm prepared to approve it.
You're good, thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Bennet, uh, I agree, uh, you know, ever there was a good use of the word de minimis, you know, which is a lawyer's word for super small. So, um, I, I too can support it, um. So, uh, we will close the deliberations, and, uh, do we have a motion?
I will be happy to make the motion, I move to approve the special permit for non-conformities for fourteen Jackson Street. Which is number twenty-three dash one.
Very good, uh, and also make note, uh, that the, uh, D P S has no comments or recommendations on. Sidewalk or tree ordinance, uh, issues, so, um, Mr. Swanton's motion, uh, is made, if you have a second. The scout's second motion is made by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Ms. Scott, calling the roll, Mr. Swanton. Yes, Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that is five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries, and the special permit for non-conformities is approved, good luck. Thank you, um. Moving on to our. Final, uh. Application this evening. During the public hearing, second, this is the application of sixty-eight Bronfield Street LLC for the property. Located at sixty-eight Bronfield Street, this is a special permit for non-conformities. Uh, the applicant seeks all necessary permits, approvals, and or permissions, uh, from the zoning board of appeals to modify. A pre-existing non-conforming structure with the, with an addition to the rear. Uh, with that, may we hear from the applicant?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman Costa thirty Green Street, in his report. Uh, with me this evening is, um, Blake Wilcox, who is the principal at sixty-eight Bronfield Street LLC. And Matt from Stock Brown's office, who is the architect on the project, and my colleague Ben Taylor, um, who also assisted in this application. Um, so if you go to the first slide, please. So this, uh, proposal is to construct a, um, two-story addition. In the back right-hand corner of the property of this existing four-story multifamily structure. And to renovate the building, including exterior features that, um, I think when you see the existing photographs. Um, you might agree, um, will need a facelift or does need a facelift. Um, so the exterior features to be modified are various egresses, doors, windows, um, and siding. Uh, to make it all more appropriate for the architectural style of the house, um, and of the neighborhood. Uh, the property is located in the R two, um, district and the D C O D zoning district under the ordinance. Um, I want to correct something that I had in my filing that I think some folks, um, found confusing. Um, so this is a multifamily structure in the R two zoning district. Um, it's pre-existing non-conforming for both, um, use as well as, um, structure. And because the R two doesn't have a multifamily use. Uh, use the dimensional requirements under the, um. Multifamily district, that's the multifamily dimensional criteria that's blank, it used to be R three, but it's now says multifamily and there's a blank. So that's why you use these dimensional requirements. Um, the property is improved, as I said, with a four-family structure, uh, it was constructed around nineteen hundred. Um. And, uh, according to the assessors' records, around eighteen forty-ish. According to the district data sheets, um, it has had significant amount of work and additions placed on it, um, over the years. Uh, the proposal does not cut into any of the existing roof lines and does not trigger the demolition review under, uh, the historic commission. Um, and also is shown on, um, architectural plans, um, less than twenty-five percent. Uh, the exterior walls are being removed, and therefore, the D C O D is not triggered. Uh, the property is non-conforming for lot area. Front yard, both front yard setbacks, it's also a corner lot on, uh, the corner of Bronfield and Prospect Street. Um, and it is non-conforming for rear yard setback. Um, and open space. The lot area is five thousand three hundred and ninety-nine square feet, where twenty thousand is the minimum lot size. The primary front yard, which is Bronfield Street, is two point nine. The second dairy front yard, um, is, which is Prospect Street, is two feet. Both where twenty feet is, uh, the minimum required. The rear yard setback is nineteen point three feet, where twenty feet is required. And the property has twenty-six percent open space, where a minimum of forty percent is required, go to the next slide, please. Uh, the property is conforming for parking and height. Um, this is a multifamily structure, and so it is reviewed under the first special permit section. Of the ordinance, um, under section nine F seven, um, and that is that you cannot extend. And or intensify or create any new non-conformities, and this proposal does not do any of those things. Uh, in fact, this proposal improves the open space from twenty-six percent to thirty-four point two percent, and so while it continues to be. Non-conforming, it is improved. Uh, next slide, please. So here's the site plan, um, Bronfield Street is to the bottom and Prospect Street is to the left. Um, as you can see, the proposed addition is in the back corner, the back right-hand corner, as I described earlier. Additionally, that crosshatch area at the top corner, that is all currently pavement, and you can see that in some of our photographs soon. Um, there's parking that goes all the way around this building right now, uh, that is proposed to become landscaped area. Uh, and, um, improved in that area, and so the parking will be limited to. The parking would be shown right off of Prospect Street and Bronfield Street, which is part of the reason the, um. The open space numbers, um, are improved. Um, so, next slide, please. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt, so he can go over, um, the changes he's proposing to the structure itself.
Good evening, everyone, Matt Menjus, uh, Scufferon Architects, forty-eight Market Street, in the report for the record. Uh, as Lisa mentioned, this project has gone through a number of renovations, so our goal here really is, uh, two-fold, it's to, to clean up the elements that are old and tired and dated. Uh, and then at the same time, infill, uh, an appropriately sized and scaled addition that fits well within the context, uh, of the neighborhood. So I'm looking at the self-elevation gear. Uh, we're adjusting the entries to the first floor by shifting the door on the right and adding an entry to the unit of the left. Uh, both of these have a small entry roof with brackets, uh, and a slate roof over the top. And, uh, the windows for the project are going to be, you know, black, six over one aluminum clad windows. Seven eights, uh, completely divided lights, and then the siding is a combination of, uh, hardened plank clapboard and, and shakes. Uh, this elevation, though, has been updated from the previous middle. To include a, a minor adjustment to the location of the basement windows, which is located in the bay, it's sort of, um. Right behind where through your viewing, that was strange, you know, so it's just, just underneath there.
There we go.
Yeah, exactly, uh, next slide, thanks. Uh, this is the, the Bronfield Street elevation, so here we are removing the existing roof overhang, uh, you know, the existing elevation, the top drawing there, it's on the. Second floor above the windows. Uh, and then we're cutting that back, uh, to the existing bump out window, so it's going to be a, a flat roof instead of that overhead now. Uh, also viewable from this elevation is the basement stair access on the lower drawing. Uh, the addition in the rear and then access into the first floor unit, uh, into the addition, as well as the second floor unit, via a small deck and stairs, uh, in the rear. Next slide, please. Uh, the north elevation shows a better view of the addition. Here we, uh, this has also been submitted, though I should say, uh, to include a minor adjustment to the second floor windows. And a material change of the addition, uh, the windows have been changed from a full height double hungs, uh, to half height. and a material change of the addition. Uh, the windows have been changed from a full-height double hungs uh to half-height uh on-in windows, and then the siding has been switched from clapboard to to shake.
Can you just hang on one second there, Matt? So um, these changes were done actually um late yesterday at the request of a neighbor. And so that's why we have them. Um, they wanted the half windows and not full windows in the back and the material change to show differential uh from the new from the old. And so we do have that for um and I can hand these out to the board and you can look at them there, whatever you want to do. But um, so that is the change on the rear of that, but it was done at the request of one of the neighbors.
Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so finally, this is the west elevation. This shows uh a better view of the covered slider with plank and windows on either side and and the overlapping stair that goes down to uh the the yard in the in the back. Um, and also shown on this is the entry door on the first floor of Prospect Street unit, which you couldn't see from the front elevation on the Prospect Street elevation. Uh, this has a covered entry and a slate roof as well. Uh, this elevation was uh again, to Lisa's point, was also updated to um for uh siding material change, so pretty minor. But uh, these changes, along with you have the materials, the size, the scale of the addition, uh, as well as honestly the approach to the entire project. Uh, it was uh influenced really by collaborative discussion with the neighbors. Uh, so based on rounds of conversations back and forth and surrounding butters, we've incorporated this feedback by addressing uh the size of the addition by keeping the roof down. Uh, it's flat currently to reduce the vertical math thing. We've introduced a a higher quality of materials than what is there now by introducing aluminum clad windows and two different forms of siding, which is uh the clapboard and the shakes. And that helps, you know, break up some of the lengthy addition. And then we've also added slate roofs and standing seam metal to give the entrances a bit more of an attractive look. Um, and then quickly, I just wanted to address that previous to tonight's hearing, there was a concern about about uh square footage. Uh, the existing square footage on the assessor's card is actually listed as twenty-seven hundred and forty-eight square feet. Uh, the basement square footage is not listed, though. However, if the the existing ceiling height of the basement uh as it is now allows that basement, the entire basement to be finished, living space, if it were to be finished. So that would potentially add an additional fourteen hundred and thirty-four square feet without the addition uh and just wanted to to make sure I mention that. So the goal, though, is to finish the entire basement space, it's the entire basement space. There's living space, uh, additional veterans down there. So in the end, that adds a total of about nineteen hundred and thirty-four square feet of additional finished space um to the existing property. Uh, Blake and uh our office obviously have done a lot of work around Newbury Court. We're proud of what we've completed and continue to do so around town. But for this specifically, uh, this is on a obviously a pretty prominent one in Newbury Court. So it was our goal with this approach uh that we have we attack this in a way that most appropriately fits with the fabric of the neighborhood, and uh we believe that we have done that. Um, if there's any questions uh to address the drawing specifically, I'd be happy to repeat on that. If not, I'd turn it back over to Lisa.
So we'll just finish like your very own process.
Sure.
Um, can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Just um, so there's four units in this building right now?
Right.
And to which units are i- is the addition being added?
So it's broken up the the just the addition is one unit. It's a two-floor unit. Uh, there's two other units located on the first floor. And one of them is a sort of a counthouse unit, first and second floor, and then one on the second floor is a standalone unit.
So this is going to be a new unit that's being added? So there'll be five? No, 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 no. The the square footage is split up differently. The floors, areas split up as intended that exist today. Four units now, four units after.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay. So it's just exactly the same.
It's not just adding on to the existing units, you redoing the floor plan.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. Yeah. So the use is not intensifying at all. The use continues to be four units. That's a very good question. Thank you for asking. Um, so with that, uh, the criteria, as I mentioned earlier, under nine B two B of the ordinance says that where there's a multifamily structure, you can't create any new non-conformities. You can't intensify or extend any non-conformities, and we're not doing any of those things. In fact, as I said earlier, uh, we're actually improving the open space on the floor. Uh, the next criteria is whether or not, of course, uh, the addition and the changes are substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Um, here, um, as Matt has pointed out, there are many improvements to the elevations of this structure. Um, and frankly, the way it sits and looks on the street, in addition to the way the parking has been reconfigured so that the entire area around the house is not just parking, but it's appropriately broken up to add some outdoor space um in landscaping. The structure is currently platen vinyl, which will be removed and replaced with a combination of clavards and shakes as um and shingles, as Matt has said. The windows are being replaced with more age-appropriate six-over-one lights. Uh, Matt has described the appropriate lit window material as well. Uh, the entry roofing material will be slate with standing seam metal roofs above the rear slider. Um, all other roofing is going to be architectural shingles. All exterior trim uh will either be the PVC or composite wood, excuse me, PVC composite or wood. Uh, and the proposed addition is in the rear and the back of the structure and is subordinate to the existing structure. Uh, and there will be no increase in the number of units and therefore no intensification of the use on the property. Uh, there will be sufficient off-street parking provided uh for the use on the property. It actually meets the zoning requirements. Um, and as I said earlier, the open space um in landscaping will also be improved on the property. Uh, if you go to the next slide, please. So in this um slide, what we tried to do is, you know, this is the south end, right? This is my neighborhood. Um, and you know, we have a number of multifamily structures um spotted throughout the Bronfield, Prospect Street, you know, Allen Street, um Chestnut Street area. And so the red circles are other multifamily structures. I would um point out to you that those other multifamily structures are almost all larger in unit count than um what the current proposal is before you for the four units that exist at the corner of Bronfield and Prospect Street. Um, in fact, uh, the Milk Street condos are six units, fifty-four Bron Street is five, five units, fifty-one, fifty-three Bronfield is five units, seventy-four to seventy-six Bronfield is six units, one Bronfield Court is six units, and six Allen Street is listed as four to eight units. So I'm not really sure about that. I mean, it's it's a database. They can't decide how many units are in there, but somewhere between four and eight. Um, so in any event, um, and you can see the size of lot that this is on and the size of lot that the other buildings are on by comparison. And we just wanted to show you that from a scale and massing point of view, as it relates to the rest of the multifamily structures in the south end, which has probably more multifamily structures than most of the city, um, it's appropriate um for the neighborhood. Next slide, please. So here's a current view of this property from Prospect Street. Um, and as you can tell, just particularly from the siding alone, I think the the work that the um architects and Blake have are doing on this project is going to be an improvement. Um, and so this is the Prospect Street elevation. Next slide, please. Uh, here's the Bronfield Street elevation. This is a good view here to the back corner of the property, which right now, as you can see, is parking, parking, parking asphalt, which is going to be changed. Also, you can see in this view that overhang uh on off of the second floor that's going to be changed um and improved. Um, but again, the vinyl siding, the plastic shutters, the one-over-one windows, not appropriate at all for the age and style of the structure. Next slide, please. Is that it? So um with that, um, we're happy to answer any questions, and we would request the board grant a special permit to allow the modification and improvement, frankly, of the structure as being not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure.
Thank you, Turney. Um, with that, we'll close the presentation portion of the public hearing and go to public comment. Anyone in the room wish to be heard in connection with the application for sixty-eight Bronfield Street? Seeing no hands going online. Uh, anyone who is logged on wishes to uh to be heard. We have uh one hand raised. Let me see, um, Ms. Stephanie Nigginich. Ms. Nigginich, uh, do you want to just unmute your mic? We will go ahead and do the same here, and you have the floor.
Um, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's ninety-three High Street. I am concerned to see another application in the R-two, which allows for dimensional controls established for the R-three, simply because this is a grandfathered multifamily building. So I offer some living history. In October two thousand seventeen, the city council, and some would say an otherwise divided city council, unanimously approved the rezoning of most of the north and south ends from R-three to R-two. Thirteen days later, they also unanimously approved even more restrictive zoning on the High Street Bridge. In February two thousand eighteen, they then expanded the R-three to R-three rezoning in the south end. The clear purpose of this rezoning was to reduce infill and lot coverage in our densest neighborhoods. While zoning protects the continuation of grandfathered multifamily uses, the rezoning was not meant to allow these buildings to expand in size. I would say the act exact opposite was the intent. Could you please consider this in reviewing the application? Uh, the plan narrowly escaped DC- DC code and historical review requirements. So I guess I don't have any other comments, but happy Valentine's Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nigginich, um, and uh happy Valentine's Day to you as well. Uh, any uh any other online comments? Any other hands? Seeing none? Uh, we will, yes.
Can I just address? Oh, yes, we said it's a legal question.
Of course.
Um, so I I certainly understand the rezoning of the city. I'm well aware of it for um all the obvious reasons. Um, however, uh, when a community down zones, which is what this has done, uh, properties that have prior uses, prior structures, um, and the dimensional changes occur, uh, those dimensional changes that are intensified don't apply to that lot under chapter forty-eight, section six. Um, and therefore you use the most appropriate zoning dimensional requirements that were grandfathered on on a lot that continues to have pre-existing non-conforming use, pre-existing non-conforming structure. Um, and so that's why the zoning code administrator applies those dimensional requirements to this or any other similarly situated um now non-conforming lot or use in the district.
Thank you, Turney. Um, any other comments? Uh, public comments online or in the room? Seeing no further hands raised. Uh, I will close that portion of the public hearing, and uh we will go to questions from the board, starting with Mr. Swan.
Uh, thank you. Um, I I I'd like to go back to the architect, Matt. I guess it's true. Um, I'd like to just try to see if I can follow the um how much bigger this building is getting and kind of get at that, but I kind of lost me. She said the assessors say it's currently twenty-seven forty-eight.
That's right.
So the question is, uh, the addition appears to be, it says twenty-five point two feet by almost twenty-six feet. Wouldn't that be like? Six hundred and point five four?
It's about six hundred and forty-four.
Six hundred and forty-four.
Right.
So if I add those two, it's even twenty-seven forty-eight. Um, that's right there.
I'm also adding the basement square footage as well. So all of these numbers include the finished basement square footage.
So add the basement square footage and what you get in the total?
An additional six hundred and forty square feet. So it's the so just uh the total for for the entire vision is nineteen thirty-four.
Nineteen thirty-four.
That's right.
So we add that to the twenty-seven forty. How about the rest of the basement? Um, I see a lot of big windows showing up on the uh elevations facing both um Bronfield and Prospect Street. Is some of the rest of the basement being made uh into living area?
The entire basement, I'm going to be existing and additions made into uh, that's the intention.
So what is the grand total then? You got twenty-seven forty-eight in the old building. The basement under it must be around fourteen hundred.
I I see.
So if you, I I have the numbers right there. Just a point. So the basement is currently fourteen thirty-two, and as Matt said, um, that all has six-foot ceilings currently, right?
Yeah.
So the first floor is fourteen fifty-five and the second floor is fourteen fifty-five. So the existing structure is four thousand three hundred and forty-two square feet. So then you add the new addition, and that brings it up to um six thousand two hundred and seventy-six square feet. The addition is one thousand nine hundred and thirty-four.
That's what I'm looking for. Six thousand two hundred and seventy.
Okay, correct.
Um, now the assessors today say it's twenty-seven forty-eight. So this um, so just simple knee here, this building is way more than one, right?
Well, can I? So the assessors don't count business, the basement.
I understand.
Right.
I mean, it doesn't look like living area. The windows are almost non-existent. How are they going to be big windows?
Right. Has six-foot ceilings.
Are there currently veterans in the basement?
No.
But will there be veterans in the basement now?
Potentially.
Okay, so so that's what I'm trying to get at. So this this building, we're looking at um, I can do the math.
Roughly a third.
It's one in sixty-two seventy-six. So it's yeah, it's more than double. It's a hundred and twenty-eight percent bigger. Okay, that's kind of what I was trying to get at. It's one of the things we're supposed to consider is kind of the overall volume. And I realize a lot of it's underground, but when you look at that building today, you've looked, it looks like a two-story house, but uh could you put up the elevation uh from Bronfield and same view, if you will?
That's prospect. If you do the prospect, you know.
Okay, but this is Bronfield, I guess, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if you look at the top picture, I see one stable window replacement. In the bottom picture, I see three big windows. Could you put up the other street elevation? It's kind of the same thing here. I see one stable window. Now I see three big windows. So to me, the house is is just one concern I have. The house is presenting as a substantially bigger house. And in fact, if it's a hundred and twenty-eight percent bigger, it is a substantially bigger house on a very small lot. Um, my next question uh has to do with, I just want to make sure I understand the uh this R-two, R-three thing. And I think uh Caitlin, you have a little zoning map there. Yeah, this is, this is kind of a the area. Um, I too live in the south end, so I walk by the south all the time. And I must say, by the way, I've been watching the construction and stuff going on, people being out in the basement. I think it's this house could really benefit from what you're doing. So I I know, I think it's I'm glad to see this house is getting some attention. But anyway, um, the yellow area with the dots, the the light yellow area, I assume that is the the area that's in downzone, if you will.
It's R-two.
The R-two.
Correct.
And the more medium brown area that's kind of like more downtown, if you will, that is kind of what's left of the uh
R-three.
You could actually build a multifamily house on a new lot.
Well.
Or convert one from an existing.
If they're right, if there was if any lot with a thing.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Right, um. So I mean, I wasn't here in two thousand seventeen and moved in shortly or after, but you know, in in listening to uh the person on the phone there, Stephanie Nigginich, um, I also read back, you know, some of the newspapers in that era, and there was a lot of talk about, you know, the the south end has not that much open space left and um, you know, squeezing it down. Um, and as part of the reason I was I was reading, but why this happened, uh, to eliminate new multifamilies. I realize this is a pre-existing multifamily. You're allowed to keep that going um and you're improving it. Um, but my concern is, I guess, is the scale of it. Um, if you um um yes, if you could put up the like zone matrix, I I just have a I think it's on the corner of the site plan, the most recent one. Yeah, kind of zoomed in on it. Um, so the existing, if you look at the existing coverage, it's, I guess, twenty-seven point three. It's existing, and it's going to thirty-nine point five. If you say, well, required is forty. The problem I'm having with this whole thing is the required here is what the city council has basically said, we don't want, we don't allow any new buildings to look like that. So we have an existing one. So what kind of a gray area will be on the zoning board of appeals have to kind of try to instead of all these things. And and one of the things I've noticed in our zoning code is in in this district, e- even a two-family house can't cover more than twenty-five percent of its lot. So I'm wondering that to have a house right here that is at twenty-seven, it can go all the way to almost a forty. One, if it was a two-family, it can only cover twenty-five. Um, and you can't build anything for that this year. I mean, what is reasonable? It's kind of what I'm, so I guess what I'm saying is why? Why do you feel it's appropriate to look at a forty percent as you're required? That that's not. Why do you feel it's appropriate to look at a forty percent as your required? That that's a lot. I mean, that's just if you were in a place you could do this. I mean, it's, I I don't see how we can think about that forty. Um. I'm confused.
Um, I'll try to get rid of your confusion.
Yeah.
Um, it's because it's, because it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot with a pre-existing non-conforming use, and therefore chapter forty A, section six protects that. Um, because you have what it is. And while I understand that there was downzoning. That's the point about forty A, section six, is that a person can't be, have their rights taken away from them if the lot and and or use existed. With a structure on it required to be changed and zoning. And so that's why you use the forty percent. And so we're still within compliance with the forty percent. And I understand. That, uh, Ms. Nikitic and yourself, you know, may have some problems with that. It just happens to be. That's the lens through which you have to review these pre-existing non-conforming structures, lots and uses.
But the other lens we need to look at is, is it more non-conforming than what is, I'm sorry, is it more? Is it substantially, this is definitely more detrimental.
Right.
To the neighborhood that was currently there.
Right.
Uh, and when you take a house, it's only covering twenty seven point this lot, and you go to forty, that's the other thing we need to consider. Is that substantially more detrimental?
I'm not disagree with that all, that's why there's the test, right? So when you have anything other than a single or two. You can't, when it's pre-existing non-conforming, you can't extend, exacerbate, intensify the non-conformity, not allowed to do that. Right? And so. You you're bound by that. And as opposed to a single or two, which is a little more generous. But you are, you are at the substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And so I look at the rest of the neighborhood, which is what I showed to you. And I say, okay, what about the other multifamily properties there in the neighborhood? Because you can't compare it to a single or two, because that's not what it is. Right? So what about the other multifamily structures there in the neighborhood? How do they look as compared? To what's here. And frankly, I think you could look at a number of the, of the two families. And see that this actually has more open space around it than ever the two families in the neighborhood. But. In in any event, that's, that's how you kind of look at it. And then you look at the size and massing. And I know you're looking at the full square footage. Overall, as opposed to, I think you're looking at both, you're looking at the lot coverage, but then you're also looking at the volume. Well, we don't, in new report. Right? We don't look at the volume outside of Plum Island. And here, I would, I would respectfully say that part of this volume that you're looking at. Already exists in the basement. What, it, you know, it's not like that's be. We're, we're putting in windows in the basement for sure, and it's going to be used, but it's already got six foot high ceiling. So that's not. An increase in volume. That volume exists. Right? The, you are certainly, the addition in the back is creating more volume, no question about it. So, you know. Is it too much volume for the site? Well, that's not really a question. Is the massing? And the appearance of it and the architectural style of it too much for the site? I think that's a fair question. You know, obviously, you know, or we, we believe that it's not substantially more detrimental than the rest of the neighborhood. And at the way it's constructed in the back, right? So I think massing is different than volume. And in this instance, that, most of that volume exists, even though the assessors don't say it's living area, it's certainly there. The South End record says it's there, right? Um, and so I think that's the difference, and that's the balance. And I certainly understand the whole downzoning issue. And now we have this anomaly, we have this multifamily structure, right? It's like, um, uh, there actually used to be a little commercial. Places around this neighborhood too, would be like trying to amend one of those commercial buildings that no longer exist in this area. So I think you have to look at it all. And if you could go to the MIMAS, uh, a minute, um, Caitlin and I had up there. I think that's one of the reasons I wanted to show this. So this, this is the South End, this, these are multifamily structures. In the South End, if you look at down on Bronfield Street, on the right-hand side, the one that's the most north. Look at the size of that building, right? And the one on the left of that, look at the size of that building as compared to the lot, um. And then on up Bronfield Street in this direction towards High Street, you can also see those multifamily structures. So. I mean, I think that's a fair, that's a fair comparison, but. The, there, you know, the section nine of the ordinance mirrors the requirements of. Um, forty A, section six, in that. You decide, you can't make it worse, right? Not allowed to make it worse in any regard. But then the question is, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood?
That's a possible question, just on your point about the program, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, just on your, on, uh, just the same point. So I want to clarify the legal standard here, and I understand what you're saying. That you can't take away what's already there, right? But they changed from the R three to R two.
Right.
So why are the dimensional controls for R two not applicable to this lot, even though it's a, it's a non-conforming, it's a non-conformity? But why is it that you think it's appropriate to apply the, the R three? Lot coverage percentage instead of the R two, which now appears to be zoning?
Because there's.
There, is there, is there law on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Forty A, section six says, any change in the zone, in the zoning ordinance or bylaw. That intensifies or increases the dimensional requirement shall not apply. To a structure that's already in existence, structure or law already in existence at the adoption of the zoning. And so you go to what was the most, what was the closest? When the zoning changed, and we have multifamily, obviously, that was in the district for dimensional requirements. And so that's why you go to it. So whatever was in existence at the time the zoning changed. That's what applies to that lot that now is no longer conforming.
They'll leave after you, sure. Um, I I just have two other questions before the site plan back up. Earlier in this meeting, we talked about trees and sidewalks.
Oh, yeah.
What is your plan for this? And what is the DPW?
Sure. So you, you would have gotten, um, there is an email that Jamie sent on Monday, um. So the sidewalk has to be replaced on both Bronfield and Prospect, except. Um, the DPW is going to be doing the handicap ramp, um, on the corner of the sidewalk.
And what would this sidewalk inherently be?
So, and yeah, I met with Jamie, what we're gonna do is on the Bronfield Street, you're gonna, we're gonna brick that whole section of sidewalks. What I'm gonna do is, as between the street and the sidewalk, we're gonna put a planter bed buffer, which we actually done other places around this area when we do the brick sidewalk conversion. And then on the Prospect Street side, um. I'm, I'm planning on doing asphalt, because again, breaking that whole section of Bronfield, very long section, including that whole section of drive. It will be break with a nice brand of apron to, to match the new great port details. The side on Prospect, we want to, um. Replace it all, but do it with the asphalt.
And what about trees? Did he say?
Yes, I've been, I didn't need to add a tree. I actually wanted to add a tree, uh, because we have a tree right now on Bronfield Street. And I want to add one, kind of mirror image on Prospect Street. It's, it actually, Jamie and I stood there. Like architects, and then like a tree would look really nice right here. So we're gonna do a tree on Prospect Street. Um, if you look at. I'll point to it. I have a good one, approximately, yeah. So there's a tree that exists roughly right here. So we're gonna have one sort of symmetrical right there. Looking back probably from Bronfield, it's a nice, nice image.
The other question I had was, you talked about the improved open space, so you, you know, breaking up the parking lot, and I'm sure that will. Need improvement, um, the plan had notation proposed patio gardens, green spaces, parks, if you can say anything about permeability. What, what, what would you say about?
Good question. Thank you for asking that. I do a lot of, so. I'm a big believer in perme- permeability, so all of our, uh, parking area will be permeable asphalt. Any hard scape we put down is done with permeable pavers. It's actually a, the standard of ours that we, that we do on all of our projects.
Permeable, I mean, and.
Yep.
Permeable.
Any, any pavers that we put on any of our projects are all permeable. Absolutely, yeah.
You can add that as a condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna. Um, I have no other questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Um, and, uh, Miss Scott, do you have any additional questions, uh, that you hadn't already asked, if you would?
Yeah, I just have concern about applying the right standard. And I just don't, I feel like there's a whole different for me. And I understand what, what attorney me is saying. I just would like to. See it for myself, I guess, in terms of how that applies here, because I, I, I live in the neighborhood also, and I think it's. It's a nice, you know, a nice idea to, to be, you know, renovating this building in this way, but I just want to make sure that if we're going to make a determination. That we're basing it on the right standard.
So I would also say that, you know, that's one of the reasons you have a zoning code administrator now too, who does that interpretation. It goes through that whole analysis, um, but I just haven't seen that analysis. This is what I'm saying, I guess. Um. You, you don't, you have her determination, right? That's part of the application.
We do, um, but I think what, and forgive me, I mean, just speak for Lynn, but, um. I think, is there a way you can maybe walk the board through that, um, standard? Just for, if only to simply restate what is already in the record, right? Well, I was actually asking, you know what? As a matter of fact, we can, I can ask, we have Andy in the room, so.
If I may, I don't know what kind of way you'd want to speak to that, but I think it actually, I know you've made references to forty A. I think actually in part, or maybe more so, has to do with the construction of the zoning ordinance under the dimensional table. Um, whereby there's a row that does not have a zoning district attached to it, uh, but has for the use, a dimensional requirement. And here, where there's no other district, that will be appropriate, uh, this is the only row that could be applied here. And I don't know, attorney, when you want to speak to that. But that to me seems to be, um, construction application issue that the zoning administrator encounters here. And I think it's, you know, it's a good dialogue with what is happening. And for good reason, I think, in the case of the rezoning that was done by the council, but the, um, the construction of the ordinance and with that particular row, as it's constructed. We have, um, uses and districts, and in some cases we have blanks or missing sort of, you know, uh, information or fields in there. But in some cases, that's actually meant to apply to all other districts essentially. So I think that might be, uh, what we're seeing here from the zoning administrative interpretation application of that dimensional table is. That that is the row that has to be called out here for this particular use, even though in the use table, that use is not allowed in the district. This is the, where the dimensional table puts that, uh, requirement for this particular use. So I don't, I get it, I don't.
Yeah, it says multifamily, and then it's blank, and then it says multifamily WMD, multifamily WMU, multifamily. So this is multifamily blank, and then it applies these dimensional requirements, right? So if the multifamily is not covered, and there's a multifamily use, pre-existing non-conforming. That's what it applies. I'm gonna give you a, a totally different example. So in the, um, in the B two district, corner of Liberty Street. Fair Street, what is that? That's B two, I think. Um, there's a single family home there, which is not allowed in the district, right? Not allowed in the district. And you apply the closest. The, the closest dimensional requirements to that single family home. In fact, this board has done that, granted special permit for a house, two houses in. Based upon the interpretation and requirements, that that's the zoning, the, the single family for the R three in that instance. Which is the closest to that, would have applied to that district before the zoning changed. Um, because it's all born out of forty A, section six, and protecting pre-existing non-conforming use of structures and lots.
Looks, thank you.
Um, thank you, uh, this is important. Thank you, attorney, um.
Yes, okay, I want to make sure it's the number right. So the finished area that we finally calculated. Six thousand two hundred and seventy six square feet, is that correct?
Good point, yeah.
And the lot is five thousand four hundred. Square feet, am I getting that right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, could you please, Lane, are you saying that the increasing the intensity of use has only to do with? Not increasing the number of units? In other words, you could add as much square footage as you want, and that doesn't intensify the use?
Right, within the dimensional requirements, obviously, right. So the use is, what is it? It's a two-family, it's a four-family, it's a commercial building, it's whatever, right? So the use is a four-family. You're talking about volume, right? And so certainly, the volume is increasing, there's no question about that. But the use itself is still a four-family use.
Okay, and is there no, do we make no distinction between a four-family use and condominiums?
It, so the, the, the difference is this, it's the use on multifamily. Um, the zoning ordinance is not allowed to control ownership. Right? So it doesn't matter whether the building is a four-family rental or a four-family condominium. That doesn't matter, not allowed to consider that, right? You're not allowed to control ownership. It's use itself, how many units?
Okay, I thought the grandfathered use was multi, I get it, I get it.
Right, okay, and then. And it is, the grandfathered use is multifamily, but it doesn't matter whether it's ownership or rights.
And I have a question for the, uh, yes, why, um, why the six over one? Windows instead of two over two, I'm just curious. I noticed it, uh, there was a note that said that was the appropriate. Style of window for that architectural area, era, and it was either built or modified, just wondering.
Yeah, I mean, six over, six over one or six over six is a, is a common sort of window that we use often, especially of, uh, houses of this age. But six over one is sort of like a, a modified version of a, of a more historic window, so. Uh, it just allows for a little bit more viewability, and, and that's what we thought was, was appropriate with, uh, the living situation that we're creating on the inside.
Okay, I'm asking further because I think enlarging the basement windows that way, and that's, it does increase the apparent mass.
It does, and part of that is actually driven by required egress window out in basement. Bedroom spaces, and it's only on basement bedroom spaces. I mean, some of the windows, you know, uh, in living areas technically could shrink down. I mean, I would note that in this elevation, it's a little deceiving, if, if, Caitlin, if you could blow up specifically to where those basement windows are. I just wanted to showcase that. The dotted lines actually represent where it would be located below the grade. So the only reason really to show that is to show that these windows are large enough to be an egress confined window and actually to escape from. The only portion that you would actually be able to see from, you know, a street cape view, other than the actual window well, is that top part of the window. So, uh, I, I think part of, uh, some of the, uh, what's not helping in this elevation in this case, is the dotted lines, you know, showcasing that the windows are, are getting taller. On the, on the, uh, um, Bron, uh, Bronfield Street side though, you would most likely see, uh, that entire window. Because there's, there's a lot more of, of a gradient drop off.
Elevation change.
Exactly. So this is really just an, an area where we're using that exact same window for, you know, repetitive, um, property.
Okay, thank you. And I have a couple more. Can you show us the, uh. There's a, kind of the park, the parking's not changing. There's eight, there will be eight. But some, but you're reducing the lot coverage by adding hard scale.
Uh, open space, open space, right? So lot coverage is under a roof. Open space is, right, okay, so.
But can I see that, what's the landscaping and hardscaping? And I don't, I, can you enlarge it a little bit? I looked at it at home and I just. Does it get any bigger? Oh, thank you, okay.
So the hat, the cross hash? In the back, that's gonna all now be landscape, hardscape, patio, landscaping, greenery, bricks. All of that. And now it's all asphalt, as you can see in that photograph, the asphalt goes all the way around the house. So it won't be used for parking.
Okay. And the last question I have is, what are reasonable or alternatives for, for people? Ask. I'm sure you've considered other things, and then just wait, came up, I mean, there are the reasons, but that's staying for you and.
Yes, yes, I mean, we, I obviously I've also worked very closely with them, because I think that's one of the more important things to in the South End is working with. The voters, working with the people that are around the project, because they live there. I, I also live in the South End. I'm very sensitive to. You know, what, I had both houses next door to me, under full-blown construction for eighteen months, so I'm really sensitive to. Construction and the change that comes with this. So I think it really. Is bestowed upon people like myself who are working on these projects to knock on the doors of the neighbors and say. Hey, I, I want to do something here, let's work together, so that I take this structure. And fortunately, a lot of the neighbors in this area know me and know my company, the Joppa Group. That, and so when we started knocking on doors, people were excited, which is rare, but it happens, it's nice. So we work with them closely, say, hey, we want to do something, let's work together, because you live here, you also know the surrounding, you also know this space. Here are my ideas, give me your feedback. And that's how we sort of work together to come up with a plan like this, where. We keep the additions on the addition in the back, we kept that all flat, which makes Matt's life very hard. But was a better detail for the neighbors. We also changed and tinkered around with the windows to afford them privacy. Because I, that was one of the sensitive spots for me, was, you know, when you add these windows, people feel like they're on display. So that was one of the very first things I went to, is I said, hey, let's, let's work on this together. You know this is gonna be a beautiful structure when we're done, but let's, let's kind of meet in the middle. And that's what, that's what we did. That's why you don't see any of the neighbors here, totally here. Because I knocked on doors and we worked together, and we tried to come up with this, with this middle ground where I get. I get some things and they get some things. I give and they give. And I think that that's really what's important for a project like this. It's not easy. It's actually very hard to do.
And I, I just want to add, I think part of it is that a lot of the improvements to the existing structure couldn't be made. If there wasn't some increase in the square footage, right? It ju- it, there's no, doesn't, it doesn't make any financial sense, right? That's just. If there wasn't some increase in the square footage, right? It just, it there's no, doesn't it doesn't make any financial sense, right? That's just the reality of it, so. If you're going to improve a structure like this, there you, there needs to be some give and take on it.
And and specifically with the addition, if you if you start to look at like at size of the runs and bedrooms just for the second floor specifically. To break up two bedrooms for the second floor and twenty-four feet, only really gives you twelve-foot bedrooms, and once you take out. Uh a two-foot closet in the staircase, it starts to crunch those bedrooms down to maybe ten, eleven feet, so. Uh I felt Blake and I and and Scott have gone through a kind of a rigorous process to condense and condense and condense, but. Still make it actually livable and and you know, able to turn furniture and then that sort of thing.
And my very last extra question, but was, can we see the floor plan? Writing his bedrooms and bathrooms.
Right, on the second floor, right, yeah.
Um I just have a one or two, uh can you tell me what what are the sizes of the units now in this structure? The the four units roughly, you know.
They currently are, the units themselves.
Yeah, current size, are they all the same, or they vary? I I'm just trying to get a sense of what they are now.
Mister Bennet, while um Matt's looking for that, I can tell you what they're going to be, and I was looking for. So the proposed units are uh, they're, wait a minute.
I actually have right here, yeah, so so you know, if you take the twenty-four, twenty-seven hundred roughly square feet, each unit, existing unit is just under a thousand square feet. And the proposed units are uh at a, the smallest one is eleven hundred and seventy-four square feet, and the largest is nineteen hundred and ninety-three square feet.
And the other are fifteen hundred.
The other are fifteen hundred square feet, but those all include the added additional uh basement square footage, which is is obviously under underground.
Okay, thanks. So I have, my colleagues have uh covered the waterfront pretty well.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Bennet.
I'm sorry, just one other, one question. Is there any consideration of of using asphalt? On the sidewalk as opposed to, I'm sorry, concrete as opposed to asphalt on the.
So thank you for asking that. I so Jamie and I did talk about that on on Monday when I, when we met, and I think that was something that was a little gray. I wanted to use asphalt, I think he said it it might be required to use concrete. I prefer asphalt, because to be very fair, we are breaking a very significant portion of Bromfield Street with doing this project. And so I was trying to say, hey, can I do asphalt on Prospect Street? He did say I may have to apply for a waiver to do that, but again, he did not know, so I I am proposing asphalt to be very transparent.
I appreciate your candor, and I appreciate the notion of of laying the brick. I have a bias in favor of concrete, I have a deep bias against asphalt, but.
Okay.
But on the other hand, you're you're doing a wonderful job in scraping up a big eyesore of a plot of asphalt next to this.
Great. Was there any further, Mr. Bennet, before I? I didn't want to cut you off if you were still commenting.
I'm done, thank you.
Great, um I I see um uh Mr. Port's hand.
Sure, I just I just wanted to speak roughly to the sidewalk, if you. I want to speak for the director, after Director Public Services, I think that the ordinance is the way they're constructed, and the policy the city council has here is pretty clear that. In this area would have to be a concrete sidewalk and not an asphalt one, should to the point where it would have to be requested, I'm not confident that one would be granted by the council in this location.
And if they don't correct, then we do.
He'll comply with the ordinance, right? That's right, whether he gets a waiver or not, then.
Uh okay. Any um additional questions before we uh we close? Questions from the board, I, just for the record, I I didn't have any further questions other than what has already been discussed, so. Um I will close questions from the board, and we'll go into deliberations. Uh again, deliberating the standard for a special permit for non-conformities, uh simply from field streets, let's begin with this.
Well, the first of our two speakers, are there any new non-conformities? Not, um I do not see any, only hold it to the standard of uh explained by. No new non-conformities. The other question is, is it substantially more detrimental um? Than what we have, than the non-conforming building we currently have. Um and that's where I'm concerned, um, you know, we spent a lot of time on the. Square footage, going up a lot, um more than doubling. Um now, to be fair, some of that's in the basement, you could take that out, the square footage is up a lot, um. And the basement, because of the windows, uh particularly on the most busiest street here, Bromfield. Given the appearance of mass, uh you know, it looks like a two-story building now, it really looks more like. More of going on than there's two-story buildings, so in my mind, that's something I need to consider when thinking about what's the mass effect. Of adding uh that much square footage of living space uh right down the corner of Prospect and Bromfield. You know, coverage is going from way down to twenty-seven all the way up almost forty. The other thing is, we we see a lot of additions. Uh I can think of several of them that are being built right now on the south end. One went next to uh our council over here, um and when we see additions, um. Usually they're in the back, usually they're tucked in a little bit, so they're not quite as um, don't have quite the. The feeling of mass on the street. This one's kind of reverse, I mean, yes, you're filling in the back corner of your L, but you're also popping it out at six and a half feet there, which. Which definitely adds to the massing and the feel of this building, uh more so than the the great majority of ones we see. I also thought this techniques, questions around intensification, it's not something I thought about, but is this an intensification? Well, it's still four units. But if there's a lot more bedrooms and more people, is that intensification? I mean, I it's, I know, once again, we're in this. Spray zone here, and the zoning board reveals, so we have to kind of weigh all these things, and we have to come up with, is it substantially more detrimental? Uh and, you know, I do appreciate your willingness to add promulability, uh prominence and. Brick and concrete and the tree, those are all good things, but I I'm stuck on the, is it substantially more detrimental? Detrimental to the neighborhood than the current massing that you have? Now, I realize you're fixing up a building big time, so that's an improvement, but is it substantially more detrimental on this little lot? This busy neighborhood on this very visible corner. And I think it is, so I cannot support this application.
Thank you, Mr. Swan, and um, Miss Cal.
Yeah, you know, I I. I hear what um Mr. Swan is saying, I think that I agree that it doesn't seem to to, you know. Intensify necessarily or extend a new non-conformity or or a non-conformity or added, but it is. I have some concern about the additional massing, given the change in the zoning. Of the whole area to R two, which has a substantially smaller lot coverage percentage. That we're going from twenty-seven to forty, when the rest of the neighborhood, it's been made clear to be twenty-five percent. So. Other than that, I do appreciate that, I think the the design and, you know, getting rid of a lot of that concrete, I think is a lot, is a lot better for the neighborhood. I'm concerned about the precedent for adding that much massing. In this neighborhood, when the city councils expressed a desire to to stop it to a certain extent, so. I'm not sure how I feel about it.
Okay, we can circle back to, but um we'll uh move on to this tactic, um your thoughts.
Yes, my thoughts are, so in the previous application, we have. Corner lot, I hear a lot of corner lots, that was six thousand four hundred and fifty-four feet, and the house was going up to. Two thousand two hundred and thirty square feet of living area, now I'm looking at. A lot of it, six thousand two hundred and seventy-six square feet, and the finished total of living area of five thousand four hundred square feet, and so that does strike me. As a dislocation, I agree, as a permanent corner, that the massing is too much for the site, and also the inherent massing is too much for the site. In a way that is substantially more detrimental, like this is kind of info that, info that zoning was written to address specifically that. That wrapping around truly, so I I wouldn't support the current plan.
Okay, um thank you, Mr. Bennet. Greg, you want to unmute your mic?
Thank you, um I support this project, and I'll try to explain why. First, I I guess I look at this a little more holistically than my colleagues, uh I'll first observe that uh. Uh this city uh needs uh housing and uh. Housing is a major problem in our community, and this project enhances and improves. A four-unit uh housing stock, and it does not intensify the use, and uh. The law is crystal clear about that, so there should be no doubt that this is not a use intensification. But what it does do is provide this community with four. Properly sized uh uh living units. Uh in a building which now has been improved both aesthetically. In every way, and and I would say that if there is a telling comment on whether or not. The massing is too much for the neighborhood, I would simply look to the neighbors. Who have approved this and have worked with the developer to approve this project. Uh so I do not believe in any way that it's that the masses is is overwhelming either for the neighborhood and certainly for the lot. It meets uh open space and coverage criteria. Uh we may not like it, some of my colleagues may not like those uh provisions which apply here, but they govern. And they are what we are bound to follow. I do not, when I look at this structure and I compare it to some of the other. Uh multi-units uh in the neighborhood, it is certainly not inconsistent width, and is certainly not. Unreasonably or substantially in in cons- uh cons- inconsistent with, so I find there's no legal basis. For me to uh uh do anything but to uh approve this, and in fact. It is a significant improvement from an aesthetic point of view, I mean. Uh it it just, this building with this slab of asphalt, uh the way it looks now. Uh to not approve this, I think would be uh contrary to what's in the best interest of the neighborhood, so. I feel strongly about this, and I would urge my colleagues to reconsider.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, um I have to say, I I shared Mr. Bennet's sensibility in this as well, though, respect the. Comments of my colleagues uh that have spoken already, but I I too kind of find myself aligned with the uh. The rigor, I guess, of the legal criteria, um a bit within reason, we're not a board of robots, of course, so we. We have to uh, we have to collide the rigor of the legal criteria that governs our board and our our discretion with. Of course, the humanity of discretion, right? Within, also within reason, as uh as sort of organic thinkers. Uh we have to take a bit of, I think, Mr. Bennet said, said it well, a holistic approach within, you know, within the guard railing of um. Of the zoning ordinance that that empowers us, but when I zoom out, um I can't help but look at this as an improvement. Um if I zoom, if I zoom in, it becomes a series of colored dots and pinpoints perhaps, but like I say, zoom out, I see the bigger picture for me. I I I think that I'm, and I find it compelling that it's an improvement. Um aesthetically, but but most important for me is that it's an improvement. That has run through the lens of at least the micro. Constituency of impacted uh individuals, which are the immediate abutters, though they are not the only impacted individuals. Perhaps that's where Mr. Bennet and I might diverge, uh I believe that the uh the city. And uh and all of its sort of disparate interests are, whether we live next door or across town, are all interested stakeholders, so I. I always try to take that into consideration, but again, I'm just brought back, the gravity of it for me is that it just, it just feels like an improvement and and a thoughtful one. Um though an imperfect one, perhaps, um housing stock is is no joke. Whether it's, you know, the right housing stock or the 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 housing stock in greatest demand or in scarcity of supply. Others will probably have a better thought on, but I think that any housing provided is 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 an improvement, so I I'm moved by that. I also know that the uh that all of the the abutters that were noticed, um. Uh we are often informed by the sensibility of those neighbors most closely impacted by their geography. I know that we have no opposition from any of those stakeholders, um and. You know, I I think that's part of the the soup, as it were, for me, so I find myself aligned for many of the same reasons, though not all of the same reasons with Mr. Bennet. Um and and for what it's worth, those are my thoughts, uh so. Any other further deliberations by board members before I do want to, I do want to pose a question to the applicant, uh given what we've heard out loud. But any further deliberations from anyone?
Yes, uh after hearing what Mr. Bennet and you have said about um the approval of the neighbors and their process in there, I. I agree with that, that I think they have probably the best, most important way in determining whether or not. It is detrimental to the neighborhood or not, and that sways me, I will support it.
Um, okay, I could, sure, um because I think my colleagues have brought some good points. I, you know, I think it is important, you know, that the neighbors support this, um. But I think you made a good point, too, that, you know, we also need to look at it from the point of view of the city, um. I'm not surprised you go to the neighbors and I've heard through this house and say, look what we're doing, do you support this? There's a lot of good things here to support. I don't dislike your whole plan, I, to me, it's the it's the degree of the plan. Um and it's. So it's, that's, you know, it's when I kind of put the city hat on and say. This is going to be intended for what people are trying to do here, when they did have a major down zone. Uh I realize technically, we can, you know, we can max out every existing pre-existing. You know, multifamily until they hit forty percent of the lots, but is that really? Isn't that more detrimental to the neighborhood based on the direction that was taken? So it's, you know, those sort of things, to me, I don't dislike the plan, just the degree. Um it's the state sticking out to the right, it's the, everybody else tries so hard to make their additions less impactful. From the public ways, and that's a major public way, so anyway, I I don't, I just want to respond to.
This is the process, um you know, Ken, and I think it's it's with a great deal of deference and respect that I think we all. Have evolved to a point where we we sort of hear each other, um and it, you know, it's it's. It it's it's important work, I mean, not to make, not to be self-aggrandized, right? But it is, it's it's not easy. Uh to weigh these these differently weighted objects and attempt. To call them all apples and compare them together, but we we do, we do the best we can, I suppose. Your points are well taken by me as well, um expecting.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I agree with Mr. Bennet, if I mean, housing provided is an improvement, but it's one and four units. Four units, so I can consider it as adding.
Right.
We could do that.
So so um and and Miss, I think, was there anything else? So so, Trin, you 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 hear the, you you, you hear the the sort of the sense of the board, um what would you like to do?
I would like to, I'd like to say a couple of things, and then um I think we'll we'll continue, but I I would like um for those members who are um not necessarily supporting it right now. I'd like to point out a couple of things. I I hear the comments relative to the overall square footage of the building. In within the footprint that's being provided, which is within the dimensional requirements. And I understand your issue related, that's essentially, we refer to that as F A R, right? But it, we have not adopted F A R in the rest of the city but for Palm Island. And if the city, God forbid, in our then area decides to do that, they need to do that, but it's not a criteria today. It's not a criteria today. Um the other thing I would point out is that um. We were just on Ting Street, and we just had the corner conversation about Monroe and Ting, and there was a comment that somebody made, I can't remember which member, frankly. Um that, oh, that's, you know, that's far back from the corners, over fifteen feet back. Well, this addition is twenty feet and two or seven, I can't see the plan, but it's over twenty feet, just over twenty feet back. From the side, and this sidewalk is very wide as well. And then you've got Bromfield Street, which is one of the white streets in the city, right? Because they used to take the ships down the street. But in any event. So this addition is back. It's not right on top of. The sidewalk, right? So I understand that it, um, unlike, uh, some additions that you might see that are a little more inside what the existing structure is. In this instance, it's not on top of the sidewalk. It's, it's back away from the edge of the sidewalk. And frankly, the sidewalk there is probably six feet wide, seven feet wide. So from the street. It's another twenty, it's twenty seven feet. So I don't think it's on top of. The sidewalk and it's also shorter. Than the existing structure and has a flat roof. And so I think that. While if you look at this. Plan, it looks like, wow, there's that addition that sticks out there. And. But if you look at the elevations, it's not quite so bad because it is over twenty feet away. And so I would hope that, um. I, you know, I don't know if that, if those comments change either of the two members' positions on that, um. If they do, then we can continue on. If they don't, then I, I guess I would ask for a continuance, but I really would like you to, to take that in consid- into consideration because. Um, I think those are important points to make that. If we want to talk about volume. Square footage on a lot, then we need a zoning dimensional requirement to do that. Um, otherwise, we look at architectural style and massing and. Um, things of that nature. And in this instance, the addition is uh more than twenty feet away from the property line, let alone from the sidewalk and street.
Thank you, turning me, um. Any uh further deliberations by any members of the Z B A before we uh. Close to close deliberations. Seeing none. Um, so what I'll do is, uh, on those deliberations, um.
Then we've requested continuance.
I, I, okay, so, so the applicant requesting a continuance, uh, what's our next available?
February twenty eighth.
Um. February twenty eighth. Wait a minute, February twenty eighth?
That's, it's two weeks from today.
That not, what did you say?
Today's the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Plus four, fourteen.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You're a lawyer, not a, it's okay, really.
I was told there would be no man, no. Um, okay, so. All right. Is that?
Two twenty, okay.
Yeah. All right, um. So, uh, do we have a motion to continue the, the applicant's request, the application? For sixty eight Bromfield Street to the next hearing, which is. The twenty eighth, that's everyone.
Oh, move.
Right, and we have a second.
I'll send.
Great, motions made, uh, by Mr. Swonkin, right here, by his staff, wanting to continue to February twenty eighth, Mr. Swonkin. Yes, Miss Cal.
Yes.
And Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And well, Jan Petty, yes, five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion to continue is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The creation of patients. Uh, okay, uh, moving. On to. That will conclude the public hearings this evening. We can go into our business meeting. Uh, we have uh just two matters before us. One, of course, is to. Vote to authorize electronic signatures. I think I all know what that is and it's a, it's a, uh, it's, it's a wonderful. Adoption that saves me from, well, actually deprives me of my. You know, uh, so I'm gonna vote no. Um, so. We can just, uh, and we're already seeing this happen, this, it's, I think we're the last four, but I'm gonna get it online, but. But thank you guys for the work to get that sorted away. Uh, do we have a motion to approve? The adoption, uh, uh, the adoption and authorization by Z B A of electronic signatures on, um, on decisions, oh, move.
I second.
And seconded, motion made and seconded, um, calling the role of Mr. Swonkin, yes, Fontaine, Miss Cal.
Yes.
This, yeah. Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And I vote yes, five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion to authorize electronic signatures is approved. We have, um, we have Gretchen Joyce, minutes of one twenty four, twenty twenty three. Any comments, revisions, notations? Hearing and seeing none. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as written for one twenty four, twenty three? So move. And seconded by Miss Pecnik, uh, motion made, seconded, Mr. Swonkin, yes, Miss Cal.
Yes.
Respect me.
Yeah.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And I vote yes, five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the minutes are adopted. I, I have no other updates. Andy, anything from you?
No, thank you. I would just ask each member on your way out if you could sign the hard copy and, uh, Greg, I guess I'll follow up with you and see if perhaps, uh, there's a convenient time for you to play it for the hall, but. Uh, other than that, it's, uh, there you go.
Uh, we have mostly jerk. All right, motion made and seconded, all with a favorite eye. Any opposed, no votes, the eyes have it. Motion carries, meaning the jerk.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.